Okay, I'd like to call a order, the 18th C around some evening. Monday November 25th at 7:00 PM. Mark would you like to lead us?
Sure.
Then we can stand.
Sure. Please, please.
Lord, thank you for this opportunity to share with all the people in the community that showed up and the people that are online. And I'd like to say thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us and the opportunities to speak our mind freely. And that everybody has some downtime with their loved ones or family or friends during this Thanksgiving period. In God's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. We have a motion to dispute number four, so he will be joining us in part. Still move? Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I have a motion, the second, to approve as presented. Council meeting minutes, November 11th, 2019.
Motion is approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And at this time, before we have a record edition of visitors, may I have a motion in a second to add five B to the agenda? Yes, our county commissioner, Will Smith, come up and give us a quick update.
I motion move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Smith. Thank you.
Thank you for having this evening. I just stopped to do a visit. I'm doing my rounds around the county as I go along. It takes thirty-five different stops in the U.S., so that's thirty-five fifty-seven, but that's okay. I enjoy traveling. So I just stopped to say hello. Also, you know, wish everyone a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Thanksgiving, Happy and Healthy. Okay, because that's very important, because you get over like I'm getting, so it's like, you know, you want to be healthy. Also, I do work, I've worked pretty closely with Mayor Hallow in the tri-county solid ways. And I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how all the elections came out, because as I was saying, I don't get that involved too closely, but I didn't. Because he and I have worked together, I wish him well. I thank him for all he's done for North Canton and for Star County. And I do wish the mayor, like, all the success in the world. And anytime I'm available for any need, to call. And if you need me or need a question or have a question in county life, give me a quick shout. And you need my card, I have twenty. And my personal cell phone's on all of them, so please, that's probably the best way to get ahold of me. So please don't hesitate to ever call. Even if it's just a question or a concern, that's what we're here for, so. But, yeah, any other questions you have? We're in the budget season, so, and I say the season of disappointment, because there's going to be a few, because what they see, the budgets are all out here in about a week and a half. But, you know, as you know, that's, you only have so much to work with, and you have to try to dispense as fairly as you can, so that's, doesn't matter what that number is. Our number's quite large, but it still only goes so far, so. Any questions for my end?
Happy Thanksgiving, Bill.
Happy Thanksgiving and Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, and, like I say, stay safe and healthy. Thanks very much.
Okay, at this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward. Did you name an address for the district? There is a five-minute time limit. Please keep it respectful and professional. Thank you. Mr. Aldrich.
For God's sake, for your seventh favorite street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I must tell you, last week's council meeting was a first for me in my nearly twenty years of observing city council. I have never, ever seen a city employee speak up here and demand a salary increase. I'm speaking on Mrs. Serena, who is lobbying on behalf of herself and the mayor, China, and the city administrator. Mrs. Serena's position was advertised in the repository back June of last year. It cost the taxpayers of North Canton $734 for advertising the position. My research, and I did last year, and I just said, like, I'm always up there being criticized. I do try to have some discretion. But with what happened last Monday, I'm compelled to speak out. When that position was advertised last year, it was advertised as a deputy director of administration, administrative services and development. And as I understand it now, that is not really the position that Mr. DiOrio had prior. And there's a big difference between the position I, in my mind, that Mrs. Serena has and what Mr. DiOrio had when he came on board. Mr. DiOrio was actually brought here in preparation for making him the city administrator. He has vast knowledge, vast experience. There's no comparison between Mrs. Serena and Mr. DiOrio. So the argument that there's a gender bias in salary here, I think is totally unfounded. Something else I discovered earlier last year, there were twelve applicants. Mrs. Serena apparently collected all the applications from all the applicants, which I think is a compliment, because she was an applicant herself. Not a single one of those applicants were contacted after they applied. I think it was a sham process and a waste of $734. I'll have a handout here for a few members of council. Can we expect other city employees to get up there and start arguing and lobbying for salary increases? I think it was a sad day for North Canton, to see that display. We've had resignations already here in the city. There was a resignation in the mayor's office shortly after Mrs. Serena arrived. And now we're seeing two more. I don't know what's the root cause of these latest news. But I knew, you know, that earlier resignation was related to who filled the current position that Mrs. Serena has. I hope we don't see a display like that in the future. Council needs to be more engaged in what's going on and speak earlier and maybe not bring these kind of situations out in public. And I would respect somebody in the higher ranks who's paid, already been paid a fairly good salary, to have more discretion than to get up here and actually threaten the city with a gender bias argument. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Anyone else? There.
Larry Cook, 1127 East Maple, North Canton. On 11/20, the following email was sent to several members of city council who will be effective on 12/319. As I wrote, often we ask ourselves the question, do we do it or do we not do it? For the betterment of North Canton and city government, each of you will ask yourself these questions during the organization meeting, December 2nd. Do we do it or do we not do it? On November the 5th, North Canton residents spoke loud and clear. North Canton council members, you now have an opportunity to demonstrate to the city you heard their message by changing the leadership within the council chambers. No need to get into specifics, as all of us know the pitfalls this city government has endured the past five or six years, and now escalated to personnel issues the likes of which this city has never seen before. Leadership is not about being the best. Leadership is about making those around you better. This is not happening with the present leadership, so make the change and make this council and city government better. Oftentimes in council meetings, we hear of legislation being passed as, let's try it. And if it doesn't work, we can change it. Like I said, current council leadership has not, is not, and will not work, so isn't it time for a change? I'm open for phone calls and questions, end quote. I think this is an issue within the government right now and should be addressed at your organizational meeting. Now, I want to thank, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And I wanted to thank, I think it's Kelly Hart, who put on the veteran stage, am I correct? Who put on the veteran stage ceremony on early November. A very, very nice presentation. Saw Mr. Seretta there. Pat, I saw you there, and I believe Kelly. And if our leadership, those young people that spoke that day is in question, it need not be. There were some very, very good young speakers, and the young lady that sang the National Anthem is very, very good. So I was particularly impressed with one little boy that spoke, probably a junior high young man, who talked of the top conflicts these, our country has had, starting with the Revolutionary War through 9/11, as I recall. And his final words were basically reaching the theme, don't ever give up. Don't ever give up. And I just, I thought that was a really super comment from a young kid. And like I said, just a really, really nice morning, though it was cold. It was cold. So that's all I have tonight. Everybody have a good holiday. See you later.
Thanks, Larry. Larry. Anyone else wish to address council? Seeing none, we'll move on to business. Let the record reflect, member Folt says, do you mind us? May I have?
Seven oh seven.
Seven oh seven. Thank you. May I have a motion in a second to read by title only, third reading, ordinance 68-19. Still move? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of City of North Canton onboard a control approval to enter to a contract by and between City of North Canton and the City of Canton for the purposes of providing legal representation in the Canton Municipal Court for prosecution of criminal cases at a total cost not to exceed $22,000 per year for a period of two years between January 1st, 2020 and December 31st, 2021.
Thank you. Chairman Weller.
There are no questions, I'm going to adopt. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion in a second to read by title only, second reading, ordinance 74-19. Still move? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance repealing and replacing the City of North Canton's public record policy codified as chapter 107 of the North Canton codified ordinances with the updated and most current policy and summarized poster attached here to incorporate herein as exhibit A.
Yes, we had a couple of committee meetings on this, been highlighted some of the changes in the last committee meeting. If there are no further proposed amendments, I'll entertain motion, second to adopt. Motion to adopt. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion in a second to read by title only, third reading, ordinance 76-19. Still move? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance to amend, ordinance number 50-03, zoning ordinance of the City of North Canton corresponding tax map, to change the zoning district to parcel situated at the southwest intersection of East Maple Street and State Route 43, Star County current tax parcel number 10006600, from general business district B2 to parks and institutional P9.
Thank you. Chairman Kiesewetter.
Yes, this is the zone change we've been speaking about, the CP station out on Maple Street. Motion made up.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have a motion in a second to read by title only, third reading, ordinance 77-19. Still move? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Stand.
Member Fonte stands. Six in favor.
General. An ordinance to amend, ordinance number 50-03, zoning ordinance of the City of North Canton and corresponding tax map, to change the zoning district to two parcels situated at 330 Schneider Street Southeast, Star County current tax parcel number 9201852 and 9201853, from two-family residential to office buildings.
Yes, thank you. Chairman Kiesewetter.
Yes, this is the two parcels on Schneider. We have the public hearings for both of those pieces. No, no issues with the, I'm motioning it up.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Stand.
Member Fonte stands. Six in favor. Motion approved. Okay. We have a motion in a second to read by title only, second reading, ordinance 80-19. Still move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance to make appropriations to currently expenses and other expenditures to the City of North Canton via period beginning January 1st, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2020, declaring the same to be emergency.
Thank you. Chairman Kiesewetter. I'm sorry. Chairman Weller.
Laura, anything you want to comment on this?
Sure, just from the agreement that you guys had at the last meeting, there are two changes. One is fund 209 store sewer levy, that was simply a formula error that was picked up when I wanted to enter it in the software system. So that's been corrected on page one. And then the second one is in fund group 20, capital improvement. We added $10,000 for the police SRO radios that we had in charge of. Those are the only two changes.
I'm moving a motion to amend, ordinance number 80-2019, pursuant to the comments from the Director of Finance and for the purposes of identification, the ordinance we would vote on amendment is the one that has as the total appropriation $45,326,058.67.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to second suspend rules of council for three readings, ordinance number 80-19.
Second.
Are you looking to pass this on in emergency? The budget?
Yeah, intention.
It was anticipated that the mayor-elect would have an opportunity to review the budget before it's finally passed. Were council officials?
Yeah.
Is there a second on that motion, or is the? Go.
I would move that we adopt the second reading of ordinance 80-2019 as amended with its emergency clause contingent upon a third vote after December 2nd.
Sounds like a good motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Okay, on to business. May I have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance D1-19. Still move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance authorizing application of 116.5 square foot portion of existing waterline easement on lot 175 in St. Heights, number 6, lot in the local township. As reported in the platform, 59 pages, pages 64 to 65 of the Star County platform records, it's moved fully described in exhibit A attached here to.
Thank you. Chairman Sarah.
You know, we talked about this, Rob, this year last week, a slip that was across, approaching on someone's annual, a lot of time, maybe finance board, Rob, thought that we could vacate a piece of that so that person could get to where he was again. So I would move, if there's no other questions, to approve this as a first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, may I have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance D2-19. Still move? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of City of North Canton to enter to a contract by and between the City of North Canton and the Star County Public Affairs Office for the purpose of providing legal counsel to each general Canton residence in Canton Municipal Court for a period of one year, beginning January 1st, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2020, declaring the same in emergency.
Thank you. Chairman Weller.
Yeah, this is something that we do every year, and we talked about it in committee last week. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, if there are any, I'm going to adopt. First reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We personally decide, we try. A motion in a second to suspend rules of council for three readings, ordinance D2-19. Still move? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a motion in a second to adopt under suspension of the rules. Still move? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance D3-19. Still move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation of funds of the City of North Canton to be appropriated from the unappropriated resources of the General Fund and the Garbage Service Fund within various coastline items for current expenses during this period ending December 31st, 2019, declaring the same in emergency.
Thank you. Chairman Weller.
All right, sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry, I was going to say, maybe two. Maybe sorry, I'm done. Laura, the ordinance, some of our good.
This is just cleaning up a lot of things for the end of 2019.
Any other issues or concerns?
Motion to adopt. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I have a motion in a second to suspend rules of council for three readings. Still move? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a motion in a second to adopt under suspension of the rules. Still move? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, may I have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance D4-19. Still move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ten.
An ordinance accepting a record plat of Sanctuary Number Four located with corporate limits of the City of North Canton, declaring the same in emergency.
Chairman Fonte.
We talked about it last week, it's eleven lots, or twenty-one lots they have over there. New face, two new roads, new curb, gutter, new toll booth, contingent on the law director, nobody agreeing with everything, so I move we pass the reading on emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Motion in a second to suspend rules of council for three readings. Still move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a motion in a second to adopt under suspension of the rules. Still move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Reports, Deputy Director of Administration.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I just need to briefly respond to the comment that was made by Mr. Osborne. I appreciate your opinion. You mentioned, first of all, on that position, as opposed to, you know, the Director of Administration, Patrick DiArlo, there's no comparison between the two. I think we both bring something to the bill. Obviously, you can compare us, and he does, Patrick does have much more governmental experience. I also bring over twenty-plus years in human resources, human capital management, handling regulatory compliance areas in FMLA, the LPADA, FLSA. And I think that's what makes us a good team. Patrick does have the government side, and I have the people's side, and the city does run with people. So bringing that to the team, I think we both have a good perspective and a good work relationship on that. The other thing you did mention when I read, you said that, you know, you said that you wished that council would have had more discretion in not bringing this out into the public. I do want everyone to know, I had no idea that my salary was going to be a topic of discussion after last week. You know, I was a little taken back and wondering why, because I think the session wasn't called, but it was there. And I do want it to be known that, you know, I was not, you know, demanding a salary increase. I did not even actually start that conversation, but I didn't broach the topic of the gender disparity. It was first mentioned by the Director of Administration, and I was simply concurring with that. And that's the direction, you know, that it went from there. You made references to resignations happening at the city. And, you know, keep in mind, voluntary resignations are adult decisions made by adult people. And people choose to leave employment all the time for various reasons. I don't know why that seems to be being linked to anything related to me. People do move on, and they, all three were voluntary resignations that you were referring to. But basically, I am focused on the work I always have, and since I've been here, I've tried to work very hard, do a great job. I'm here to work with the residents' businesses and the City of North Canton, as well as the staff. So I'm going on to my reports, then, off of that. The building department move was what I want to give a report on, we're about ninety percent complete with that. We are in the final stages, so next week, the building department will be closed on December 5th. We've made a public announcement about that. We will take limited inspections on the sixth, but just so people know, if they do need to get a permit, they need to do that prior to December. Um, we will take limited inspections on the sixth, but just so people know, they do need to get a permit and you can do that prior to December fifth. Um, of course, if there's anything that's emergency, you can always contact the, um, chief building official, you know, message. Uh, moving to the next phase, we'll be moving the engineering department up to a K S city hall and that phase will begin on December sixteenth. So that's what we all have to say with everybody. Let's nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Captain. Director of Administration.
Just want to make counsel aware, so, uh, on November thirtieth, that's the Saturday, um, at the stroke of midnight, which will turn to Sunday, I was getting a little stuck, so. Painstaking, just trying to. The mayor-elect will be sworn in at city hall at the stroke of midnight. So if you want to come down Saturday at eleven thirty P M. City hall, we won't be there. Um, Judge Falvey will square in, the mayor-elect at the stroke of midnight in city hall. So.
Eleven fifty-nine?
At the stroke of midnight.
Fifteen fifty-nine. I don't remember.
And so, uh, uh, when we have our organizational meeting, the mayor, uh, that will happen this morning, we'll go through procedure for whatever that is. So make him aware, like, pretend you may. We send the mic out.
All right. Mayor, this is your last report.
This is my last report. I still have to borrow a microphone. The microphone was coming up last week. I'm prematurely, I like that.
I'm not going to get down to it.
Get down to it. I'm going to get down to it. I'm going to say get down to it or get it cut again. Um, you know, it really has been, uh, it has been fourteen years. It's served, uh, two years as the, over two years as administrator, then came in and served fourteen years as the mayor. And, you know, when you look back on it, it's like, wow, uh, time goes by really quick. And, you know, uh, first off, I want to congratulate Mayor-elect Wilder, who is not here, but he really ran a heck of a campaign. I mean, it was a really strong, uh, campaign. Did a great job. His team did a great job. It was really very impressive. And, um, you know, there's, there's always a time for everything. You know, there's a time when you win, there's a time when you lose. But I think what, what really is, uh, you know, what I've always tried to focus on is that all of us are here for a short period of time, you know, in these offices. When, when I first got sworn in as mayor, I gotta say that was, that was the greatest day of all fourteen years, of the, the very first day. Because then, after that, you realize the immense responsibility that goes along with it. And, and there was just a lot of great things that happened in the city. We've got a great community. We've got a great staff. Uh, and we even have, uh, great critics, Chuck. I mean, I got seventeen years. I don't know what I'm going to do on Monday night. I'm going to miss it. I mean, you know, the good thing is, is Chuck, you can always count on him, uh, you know, to, to bring up issues of concerns and, you know, we've always looked at it like embrace it, you don't have to agree with it, but if there's elements that need to be changed or directed, you know, correct it. Um, but I think, uh, you know, what I feel very good about is that everybody in this room clearly strive for what's best for the community. I mean, I can say that everybody in this room without a doubt did not put their personal needs or their personal agendas first. And I think that's what, um, uh, would, is what allowed us to get so much done. I mean, we, we really went through a lot of challenges. We overcame them, but it's because you've got great people like yourselves. And it's not an easy thing sometimes, you know, you gotta stand up and take criticism publicly, but, you know, that's like going into a boxing match and win or lose, expecting that to get punched in the face. I mean, that's just a part, you know? And, uh, so again, we've got a great city, we've got a great community, and there's a lot of great things that we can look forward to in the future. But it really has been, um, it's been fantastic working with all of you. And the other thing that I've learned too is sometimes, you know, you can have complete disagreements with, uh, you know, with your colleague and, and look at Pat and I, I mean, God, that's an example. He and I did not like each other very much when we first started working as a councilman. We're now we're good buddies, right? And, uh, and, and even Darryl too. You believe that, it set me right next to him. So, uh, with that, I do, I do thank everybody here. Uh, Mr. Bill Smith, thanks for coming to our meeting tonight. You're doing a great job, Mr. Commissioner, and, uh, I appreciate all of you. Uh, and I know we've got a great city and we've got a lot of good things to look forward to, other great things to look forward to. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to roll you for all that.
But I'll be great.
Not that big.
Well, we are going to say, say goodbye to Laura and Marcia today tonight. And, uh, I mean, each, each has made, and I look back over the course of a lot of years, each has made contributions large and small in the wellbeing of the community. And I think sometimes in the curly burly of public life, you don't often say thank you. Yeah, I think, I think I can speak for a whole lot of our citizens who, who thank each of you for your unique contributions to this budget, whether it's the preparation of budget, leadership of certain issues, or crafting some legislation that benefits the community. So I would say thank you. The only other thing I would say is this, is that life has a funny way of, uh, circling back. And, uh, even though I'm getting older, I look forward to an opportunity perhaps again serving each, each of you. So thank you.
Chairman Fonte.
Boy, a lot of nice things said tonight. You know, it's funny, uh, before I got appointed, I know Chuck beat me to death. If you Google my name, you'll still find it Osborne, Brigs Councilor Choice of this Fonte, this, I don't know if you guys remember that. And I didn't even know Chuck at the time. I said, Chuck, how could you do that to me? You don't even know who I am, don't know anything about me. He does now. And Chuck and I belong great, and he's a great guy, he's a good critic, and there's a lot of people out there that are trying to keep our feet from fire. But you know, the funny thing is, when I was on that side of the room, coming to meetings, listening, I was so frustrated because I thought, you know, what are you people doing? Do I hear these things? And I think, are you guys really doing anything or should you all just run out? And I haven't said this before. But you know, the interesting thing is, once you're in the arena, so we're all in the arena. And until you get into the arena, you really don't know. And the thing that's interesting is, you know, you have to understand, you're in the arena fighting fight. I mean, you do the best you can. I mean, we're not perfect. Uh, but everybody, even Kathy, you know, like when we had conversations, you've done a very fine job. And I know it's, it's awkward when you get on the spot like that. Laura, she's awesome over there. I hate to see her go, but she's awesome. Um, but the mayor, anyway, I, I think he's ready. Right? Right here?
I'm ready.
But I'm just saying, you know, Dave, you fought a good fight, and I've been in the arena with you for many different fights. And, you know, you'll be greatly missed. And you're leaving the city, city better off than you found it, and I think that's great for Steve. He's going to step into a really nice situation with, uh, Patrick and Kathy and the team that we have built and the arena we're fighting in. And we're going to continue to fight the good fight so that we can create this better community for our citizens, our families, our loved ones. And people sometimes aren't so pleasant, that they're going to be in a community that loves to live, work, and play. And we're improving the atmosphere every single day. And I'm going to do a better job, uh, communicating that from the arena out. So people really know what's going on. And I think that's a part of what the problem is. And I think that was shown in the election, that we didn't do a good enough job communicating. Because if the people think we're not doing a good job, then obviously this will break down communication. So that's my honest opinion, uh, since I'm in the arena now. That's all I have to say. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you. Director Paul.
Yes, uh, last week I had the opportunity for a couple of days to work with some folks from nearby communities, Canton, township, Jackson, even Maggiore. And, uh, they, some of them didn't know what I did, uh, as the law director. And then, once I had told them, they, they asked a bit about what that role involves. And then one, kidding me, had said that that position must be pretty easy because there are no controversies in North Canton. And, uh, so we had a little bit of laugh, uh, of that. And I said that it, it perhaps does appear that things move smoothly. And the result of that is through a lot of preparation. The reason, uh, the New England Patriots do so well is through all of those reps and through all of that preparation. And so I said, there is quite a bit that's done behind the scenes so that it does appear that, uh, it moves smoothly. The, you know, everything from the, uh, clerk preparing the agenda for all of the members here setting up, uh, for city hall, for administration to go through this total, uh, rework of this room with all of the electronics and the up-to-date, uh, equipment so that we have right at our fingertips and in view. There was a lot of work that went into this. There was a lot of frustration, there was a lot of griping. So that when we opened the doors, as, as best as we could, everything appeared to move smoothly. And so, um, with that, I want to thank and recognize, uh, departing Mayor Hell and Member Keesling, uh, and thank them for their support, guidance, and leadership while I was here. And of course, to welcome Mayor-elect Wilder and Member Stroya. And, uh, certainly welcome them and let them know that is the, the. Again, it, it does appear that it goes quite smoothly, but, you know, once you look behind that curtain and you see the wizard, uh, moving all the knobs and, and buttons and the switches and all those things, that's all of us trying to put it all together so that, uh, it certainly does have an appearance that we follow all the guidelines and the rules so that that outward appearance, uh, states something about our community. Our community, uh, does well. Uh, people are proud to talk about North Canton. In fact, they even fuss with me a little bit about joking. You guys think we're so much. Uh, and I said, well, um, you guys, you know, kidding back at, you think we're so much. And then they resigned, and they said, yes, yes, we do. We wish we had, uh, at least the appearance of, of what we have in North Canton. So, uh, thank you both, uh, again for, um, working with me. When I started, um, I had looked at each of you a number of times for, for guidance and always came away with, uh, with the way that you're so thank you both. And I wish you both, uh, the very best.
Director Hampton.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, just a couple, uh, housekeeping measures first. Uh, it, we have a, an interim payroll clerk right now, Emily Winter. She has been training for the last couple of days under Deputy Finance Director Cavellik. Coming along well. And, uh, I think she can be ready to hit the ground running. And as far as the interim Finance Director, Mark Goretto, has, um, accepted our invitation to come back and to help us in the transition, uh, period. So Mark will be in the office tomorrow, um, sitting down with Laura, talking about the, uh, the transition. I've served fourteen, fifteen years, Dave and Marcia both. Um, Darryl said it the best. It's truly been an honor and a pleasure to serve with both of you. You serve with, with honor and class. And, uh, I'm really going to miss you, but you have left, uh, the city in good hands for both Mayor-elect Wilder and, uh, Matt Stroya to hit the ground running. So I, I, I thank you for your service. As far as the, we have, we do not have legislation requests for committee of a whole meeting for the second yet, it is forthcoming. So I'm going to ask council, um, and Matt, you can raise your, well, Matt, you can raise your hand. Uh, is everybody available Tuesday evening or afternoon? Is there anyone that's not going to be available on Tuesday? Here's why I say this. There is a recount before the war two race. Um, I spoke with Board of Elections today. They could not guarantee that they could certify that by Monday evening. So, um, if everyone is available on the third of the Tuesday, we can pick the time. Uh, I would ask that we move the meeting, uh, committee meeting to that Tuesday. And as, as well, I've spoken to, uh, Director Biorio to reach out to Mayor-elect Wilder and ask that he schedule the organizational meeting, uh, for that day as well. One of the other things that was brought up to me before making this announcement was we need to make sure that Judge Falvey is available that Tuesday as well. So.
Patrick, have you had a chance to speak to Mayor Wilder?
Uh, no, I have not yet. Uh, but let's keep in mind that the current date is set by the existing mayor, David Hell, by Charter, who set that date.
Oh, fuck some more guys.
Mayor, excuse me, Dave, Mayor-elect Wilder cannot be mayor until December first. The stroke of midnight.
So we can set that tonight then?
It might be good.
We're thinking seven o'clock.
Would you?
I think your question is, your, your question is will Mayor Wilder be available on Tuesday, December third, to conduct the organizational meeting?
And keep in mind that there were other, uh, plans, uh, associated with that that had been widely circulated uh, as far as at six o'clock, uh, welcoming.
Correct.
Uh, reception. Are we going to get a, a reminder or something writing about policies and stuff just so we get it all right?
And we have to actually do that with, the, the agenda will go out tomorrow.
Yes.
Because of the Thursday, Friday, Thanksgiving, and the day after Black, Black Friday.
It could go out, it could go out Wednesday.
I think, uh, Wednesday.
All right. So, um, Mayor Hell, you are flexible.
I am flexible.
Patrick, would it be, um, do you think it would be amenable to Mayor-elect Wilder to reschedule that? And could he do the, uh, the session prior?
Here, if you want, this is, uh, you know, I guess my last executive decision. Um, somebody at Charter, as Patrick was saying, it's, you know, the mayor sets the organizational meeting, which I am okay, whatever day and time you folks want to have it, I will not be the attendance there. The, the new mayor will kick off the meeting. Um, but you can add it December first, second, or third. And, and so, uh, what do we have it set for?
December second.
December second.
Correct.
And so if there's another date that works for, with you guys, that's okay, but it's got to be the first, second, or third.
Yes. The, the third works, and more importantly, the third works for the Board of Elections. They could not guarantee that they would have it certified by Monday evening.
So then, so then what we could do is, uh, Tim needs our law director, right? Well, I'll just send out, we'll send out another memo saying that, you know, the organizational meeting will be December third, correct?
All right. That works for me now. What I'd need is a motion in a second from council, oh, first. Matt?
Yeah.
You're good. Okay. Thank you. I need a motion. Excuse me, just, just, when did you, when did you talk, how long did you talk to Jeff?
Uh, I talked to Jeff and Chuck to try to see if I was.
You need to.
That was about one o'clock, right before I talked to you. Does it change?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay. But Jeff told me that we will certify at four on Monday.
Okay.
He's on Tuesday.
He told me. So I think what we, you might want to do before you reissue, uh, just verify. just verify that four o'clock on Monday still stands. And of course, certification following is, is always contingent upon the filing of one's finance report.
Did everybody do that?
I've done, Laura. Okay, let's do, let's do that. We have, we have a couple of days.
We have a couple of days, I will verify.
All right, so let's, let's hold off on that. If we have to change it, we can do it via email. I'm gonna need four responses, and I'll reach out to Mayor. If we do have to do that, then, all right, thank you. I had to talk to Jeff this afternoon, so. All right. That's it for me. Member Folds.
Thank you. A lot of good comments tonight, all the service. David, you did a great job being mayor. Appreciate your efforts, our friendship. And sometimes you develop friendships through politics, and that's the bonus of serving your community. Because it's not easy to serve your community. Nobody up here is for the salary, no one's up here, obviously, there's no benefits. But you're up here for your love, your community, and want to make a difference. So I always apply people that wanna run and those that serve. And you write on it, until you sit in the chair, you really don't know what it's about to be a council member.
You call it here, right?
Or a mayor. So David, I want to thank you for that. Marcia, thank you for your years of service. Seen a lot in my twenty-four years. Laura, I want to thank you for your service. I think you've been the best finance clerk we've ever had. And I appreciate that. And I think Marsha's right there also, but thanks, thanks to her for helping us out, so I wish you well. Your future never stays with Marcia and David. David, the beautiful thing about you is you can have your own counseling to your impressions on you, you are an icon.
Did you do it?
There might be a vehicle, not just us, but some of the members that come up to you. I know you have me down.
David, can, can we ask David to do a couple? Okay, we'll do it after hours.
Yeah, so thanks, everybody, for making this a better, more capable place to serve. Appreciate your efforts. That's it for today. Thank you.
Member Bear.
So one of my favorite quotes is, "Man in the arena, but Teddy Roosevelt." And I kind of came upon it when my husband ran a number of years ago, and it wasn't the results that we wanted. And then my kids, I think Kathy, they all had to memorize it for that summer. And if they didn't memorize it, kind of any sentence, they had to do, I think, hundreds of sit-ups or push-ups or something. But these are so many instances, so I just wanna kind of, I just wanna read it really quickly, because anytime I get into this. And I also love Renee Brown, and she uses it at times, too, and it really talks about being in the arena, kind of sitting up here, and what it means. So it's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how strong, how the strong knows doubles or where the doer beats could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who's actually in the arena, which all of you are, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives bravely, who airs, and we do, who comes short again and again, and we do, because there's no effort without error and shortcoming. But he does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasm, the greatest emotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly. So that's a place from number B with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat. And I think I've said so much about all of us. I mean, Kathy, we went through that last week. We all do, we all get our faces marred and sweat, and then we come out better. I swear, we become out more resilient, we become out more envious, and we're humbled by that. And I actually feel like a lot of the people who sit across from us, they are in the arena with us. They actually come to the meetings, they get up on the stand, they say their name, and they ask us questions. We can't always answer them, and they may not always like our answers. But I think that they're here in the arena, and I, and I give credit to those that do that. Dave, you take the same battles up and down within these many years. I really have some pleasure working with you. And I will miss our candor and our dialogue, and I'm sure we'll have a bit with your mayor. But it's a special relationship when you talk about the friendships. That's what this hits, and Marcia stepped up that night. And Marcia and I have been friends since we both became Lincoln League, and so that was thirty-plus years ago. And she was the one that recruited me. And I will miss her candor. I purposely moved my seat, Patrick didn't move me from her. And I wouldn't let it happen. We are deep friends, and I will miss that. And her husband, well, and all her kids, and we all know that about each other. And Marcia's the person that says the things that no one else kind of wants to say. And even about the nuggets you're saying, she knows when to say them, how to say them. She remains calm and cool, she's so smart. She's done amazing things at Altman and, and for this community. And not just for here, but for the school as well. And she's raised some great, amazing kids. So she's got it all together. So I will miss her. I will miss her greatly. And Laura, I really know you now for three years, but thank you for serving with us and thank you for pointing out things that we need to see and maybe aren't aware of. None of us are finding these majors up here, none of us have their skill set, and you recognize that. Especially with working with me, and I've written a lot of budgets, but you did an easy job. And you just kind of got it all together. Your staff love working with you, and I know you will be missed with them. And Laura and I would have some meals together, and I would throw some of my strange terminology at her. And Laura has a very strong belief system, and I appreciate that. Not many, I don't know, the Laura for generations, I don't know which generation, you kind of found that millennial generation.
You're on the border.
You are on the border, and you know, have been a millennials walking into that. I give you a lot of respect for, for seeing that. And Kathy, like you said, we all have, we can choose to work or not work in environments that we know could be with our country. And so I wish you well in all your endeavors, but thank you for your service and helping us all down track.
How many go before? She can answer all the questions. All of you, all of you are just really good people, all the way around, you know, we deal with people all of our jobs, all of our life. You guys are all really good people. They both, I'll start with you, because you've led the city through so many hard times. Probably the hardest time in the entire history that I know about, I've been there all my life. And you came out, and things are better as we move forward. So thank you for that, and, you know, you know, I've learned a lot working with you. And the things, what he does best is when he talks to us. He's probably the most communicational mayor I've ever seen, because he's calling us all the time. Definitely my phone bill, uh, my minutes on my phone bill will cut in half, for sure. Because you do keep us informed about a lot of things, and that is so vital to knowing what's going on. So I personally learned so much from all of you, actually, and makes you be very proud. Sometimes when you do the right things, and your heart is so big into the city, sometimes you don't, everyone doesn't agree with that. Sometimes you're enemies with that, but that's the job of leaders many times. And I've said it before, you know, every coach can be the favorite person. And you have, you really led us through a lot of touchdowns. So I want to thank you for your, your service up here all my life. A lot of good people say a lot of good things, and we've done a lot, gone a lot of good places with the city because of you. So thank you so much for that, too. And then Marcia, I think it was mentioned, probably the most competitive person I've ever met. And I know why your kids are that way, too. I mean, you can always count on, like Steph said, that things have a quiet, you say the right thing at the right time. Not always the right way, but you make that the best way, and the right time thing there. So I, I still learned a lot from you, too, and I think you are right in the same ballpark as Dave. You've been here a long time, and it's carried the city through a lot of different times. So thank you very much for that. And Laura, I think it's, it's, that's all the, the finance directors, I don't see, I'm not finished with that long. You know, you came into a, a time when it was locked in. You, you made things, you know, you put things in progressive state, but they are strong right now. And, and so I want to thank you on behalf of the entire city for that. If people didn't know where this place was, again, perception is not reality. And there was a time that the, the finance department was nowhere near where it is today, and you put it that way. So we're, I mean, and you should be proud going forward. But for all of you, I think God has a better, better place for you all. Dave, you're limitless, wherever you go, whatever you decide to do, people are gonna laugh and tell you a lie. So I, I think it's great. Marcia, you've got so much responsibility, you've got a job going forward with, with Austin that's gonna give you so much responsibility to help so many people in the future. And then Laura, again, limitless of what you decide to do with, with finances. So again, I think there's a better direction for all of you. And that's the way it works a lot of times, when people change jobs and so on. So I will just miss you all, but God bless you all, and have a nice holiday.
While we're with Laura, you know, I've been around since two thousand and one, and I think you might fit as finance director. And with the exception of Marsha, who was just there for a few months at the beginning of my term, you are far above the best one we've ever had. Came in, took the ball running, and just really led us in a great direction. Kept us all organized. It's, it's just been really nice to have everything so prepared and easily, easy for us to understand. It's just great, and the city's really gonna miss you. I'm sorry you're leaving. Dave. So Dave had that, when he was intermениing to be the administrator. Remember that, though? And I actually didn't realize any of this, why, but she put my, her earl in my back when I had my first baby. So seeing her talking to him, thinking, God, I know that name, God, I know that name. I'm like, oh my God, Sharon, I was like, kidding me? And you wanted to be the administrator, and you did what before this? And I, I drilled him really hard, and in the end, he became our administrator, and now he's our mayor. So Dave and I, which is a big difference from day one, and the best way I can sum it up is, I, you feel like we're, like a brother. Because we were fighting like cats and dogs. Oh, I remember several out in Portland, because we were so passionate, and we have been all these years. I was appointed way back in two thousand and one, and my baby was six months old. And she's a freshman in college, which is crazy. So this is all she has, which is amazing. I've seen Jeff have all this, freaking get it. And you know, you just are like, how? And that was the hardest part of losing. I am okay with not being here for the night, believing her back. I'm thinking this is friendship, because you guys are all my friends every single year. You got me through some hard times over the last few years. And this was my constant, this was good for me, and I appreciate that. I appreciate everybody out there, you've been here for many years, was part of it. It's been a great run. I don't think I'm coming back. My signs are at the top of the garage, I told my kids I'd fight for them out when I die, but they'll sit up there just in case. But that's what it'll say, so thank you, everybody.
Laura?
Oh, I want to thank all of council for their nice comments this evening and the opportunity to serve, serve the community, serve the residents, serve the employees. I want to thank each and every one of the council members for teaching me something. I think as we've all interacted over the past few years, I've learned something from each other, but... I also want to thank a couple of people that aren't here tonight. One is all the people that came before me, that were running the finances of the city, the directors of council, the mayor. There were good choices made, and the city's in a good financial position, and that made my job a lot easier. Hopefully, it continues on that. I want to thank the finance staff, because they had my back every single day. Hopefully, I have theirs, and they are a great group of people, didn't ask for that, of course. And then I want to thank all the city's department heads, because every single one of them have taken time with me to teach me something about the operations of their departments, which just make the budget better and the numbers better. Thank you again for everything, I appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Again, welcome, yes. Okay. Final call for new business. See you now on our ten plus loser.
Salute.
Check. All favorite?
Aye, aye, aye.
Polls.